Opening the Planning Board Meeting for October 6, 2022. Rick Murray, Robert Gaynor, Amy Troopahio, and thank you, Joanne. And the agenda reads, 7 o'clock, R&amp;J LLC, 0 and 314 Plymouth Street, special permit for a two-story, 25,200 square foot storage building, which was filed on September 12th. We take an action to extend that out until December tonight. 7:15, Kennedy K-9 Camp, which is trying to rent at 416 Plymouth Street, site plan review. They're under extension. 7:30, Denzel D'Souza, 416R Plymouth Street, site plan review, also extending out into November. Discussions, 101 Monpontet Street, Oxbow Associates, and a Mesa update from Amanda Monte. Bills for Plimpton Halifax Express for 0 and 314 Plymouth Street, special permit number 981. And Plimpton Halifax Express advertisement for 6 and 8 Hilda Lane, subdivision notice of public hearing. We have meeting minutes from September and notices from other towns. And then any other business. Can I get a motion to accept the agenda?
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda as written.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
So first, we have to open the hearing for R&amp;J LLC. Town of Halifax Planning Board Notice of a Public Hearing. The Halifax Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, October 6, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the Board of Selectments Meeting Room at Halifax Town Hall, 499 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Massachusetts, 02338, on the application by R&amp;J LLC for a special permit to construct a storage facility to be located at 0 and 314 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Massachusetts, 02338. Said property is owned by R&amp;J LLC, as shown on Assessors Map 63, lots 31, 6. Plymouth County Registry of Deeds Book 38017, page 0343, to obtain a special permit as defined under the Halifax Zoning Bylaw Section 167-7D13. Schedule of Use Regulations, specific use regulations for commercial buildings and structures exceeding 15,000 square feet. The applicant is seeking to construct a 70-by-182-story, 25,200 total square foot storage building in a commercial business zone. Petition number 981. Can I have a motion to open this hearing?
I have a motion to open the hearing for petition 981.
Second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just as a little bit of information, they did make a presentation Monday night at the zoning board. They passed out some literature on what they planned to do over there. It was rather interesting, to be honest with you. They're showing eight buildings that they want to put up. The seven of them are single-story. The eighth one is two-stories. And they're showing that, which was interesting, they want to move the entranceway over based on the information that they got back from the previous applicant who applied for storage. They tried to address some of the issues that were, well, according to them, they were going to address all of the issues that seemed to be recurring over the previous application, wanting the entranceway to the storage units would line up with the entranceway to...
Stop and shop.
Stop and shop. So the light would function better. And you can see they, it looks like they closed off one of the egresses to what would be the farm stand now, Nezale's Farm Stand. So the first lot there on Plymouth Street would only be accessed from going down this new driveway and then taking a left into it. There's a proposed building in there for a, I think it's an urgent care and a Starbucks. And then the street itself, or the driveway to the storage area, is going to go back 400 feet. The closest, the first building that you would encounter would be 400 feet from Plymouth Street. And I think the further down the two-story building would be 410 feet. And it appears to be somewhere behind, the buildings were going to be behind Riley's and Alge's property. There was a bunch of different questions regarding the drainage and whatnot being a huge issue with the water back there. And they had no plans, you know, to present, other than just like drawings and sketches, no setbacks, no distancing. You will notice no distances, no distances between the buildings, no, other than what they were saying. They thought generally that, you know, where it was the center of town, people were complaining, had raised issues about what it would look like being in the center of town. The first three buildings closest to Plymouth Street, which would actually, because the others would be behind those three. They're going to make barn red to make them look, have the appearance of a barn. And what else? Oh, a couple of retention ponds, drainage, pipes going in behind Alge's that would enter, I forget that right this time, that would basically filter in and then would drain into the big gigantic pond that's there, because one of the pecks had mentioned that whatever the, whatever drains, whatever water comes through there, of course, we could use it for the golf course. You can't ever have enough water for the fairways and all that kind of stuff. So he, they seem to think that they could handle most of those problems that were up there. As far as perking and all that stuff, I checked with the Board of Health, and the Board of Health said there's only one spot that the property perked on, and it was closest, basically, at the fence, you know, that goes into the parking lot where Hawaii Gardens used to be. And, but they showed four different perking spots on it. And they had a, you know more about this, Rick, that they had a nine-to-one perp ratio, what is it?
Nine minutes.
Nine minutes, yes. Nine minutes to every...
That's not bad.
Yeah. But that wasn't because it could perk it. They had, there's a separate, or there's two other different tests that they do where they actually take the source. And they, it was explained to me that they could even mound any type of septic system. But the only septic system that I think they'd really need is that the very, the picture of the, I don't know, so the very first building is just going to be an office, so that that would be like the only bathroom. You know, it's not like every building is going to have, you know, bathrooms or bathroom facilities. So he thought they're really, basically, only need about 330-gallon tank to be put, does that sound right?
Yeah, like a 300-gallon house.
Yeah. Yes, exactly. That's basically what he said. If that's what they're going to do, then again, nothing's written in stone yet, you know, as far as site plan or whatnot. But then I spoke with, I don't know, maybe this is all too early to do all this stuff, but I spoke with Steve Haywood, and he expressed, from the Highway Department Superintendent, and he expressed issues of the water. He shared with me a video, actually a video, of the water screaming out from O'Reilly's going down to Alge's, which showed basically a gigantic puddle that was right there where it wasn't handling it now. I don't know, according to Silver Engineering there at the meeting, they think they can handle it all, you know?
That's always been a big, big thing, everything they try to put there with Alge.
I asked a question. I said, well, the center of town was a big concern. If you're just going to make the first three red buildings, why can't you make them all red? You know, this is the center of our town. We've worked with companies in the past, such as Walmart, where they, you know, they did it in Clapham, and they put dormers up, and these are big companies that, or whatnot. So they did a little bit of other research, and I went up to this storage place up here on the town line, and they have, they have 190 units up there. And I said, duh, talk to the manager. There's companies out there that actually manage storage companies, you know? Q something, it was called, the lady lives over here in, lives over here in Trail Park. And she said they have, they have 190 units up there. They had a proposal that was, she was saying that, she was told it was approved for adding four more buildings onto the, onto where they're existing now. And, but she's at a rate of about 92% capacity. Because I'm figuring, these are going to be, one of the questions was asked, these, these here, the proposals, are going to be 400 storage units. So, you know, we're Halifax, how much are we going to be able to use? You know? She said she's at a 92%...
That the existing rate now is 92%.
Right. And she said, normally, we have to, you know, we're pretty much at full capacity. We run at full capacity. So I asked another question, because there were concerns about it before. I said, I asked up there specifically if, I don't know if you've seen the ones up there, but they have boats and RVs and cars and whatnot. I said, would you be agreeable to, you know, stipulation that there wouldn't be any vehicles parked outside? And then I found out up there, they actually lease, it's not the people that own the stores, but they're just, okay, I own the stores, but I'm still putting my RV there.
Yeah.
He actually leases...
People have these and boats and stuff.
He actually leases the grass out so they can park there. And they, and she said they have trouble up there. Cars aren't registered. RVs are basically, some of them are just junk. Some of the boats have slid off the trailer and leaned against the fence. And so they said that they were, it would be right in their lease on this proposal, that there would be no outside vehicles, boats, trailers, even boat trailers just left up there. Only, the lease would say just for the unit itself.
But then, like you're saying, why, why does Halifax need so much storage?
I don't know. And the one, she also said too, that the manager up there said the one in Plimpton is pretty much full at full capacity. And they're, they have, they have much more units up there. But I don't know. That was, again, there wasn't anything specific, other than just coming to the zoning board. The way I've understood it correctly, the zoning board said, hey, you have to go through, you know, planning and site plan and conservation and water health and everybody else. So they continued their meeting till, in fact, I think it's December. So they're probably looking to do it all in one shot. But it was kind of interesting, anyway. I think, I know, I know that place is wet up there. It's, it's wet. And yeah, we'll see what happens. But they're metal space buildings, you know? I think the people, though, who are in the audience and whatnot, they all said the same thing. This is the center of our town, this is the center of our town.
That's a problem with a big storage building. They want to put there before, the building looked nice and everything. But it was, you know, close to the street. It was just, I think it just would have stood out like a sore thumb.
This one here, Rick, that's the driveway. See how they took a chunk out there so it would line up?
Oh, yeah.
And this first building is 400 feet from Plymouth Street. And I think this is 410, or this one's 410. But again, when I talked to the Board of Health, they were really concerned with the wetlands there, because where it hasn't been flagged.
So it seems like they're pretty much putting these where the 40B was going to go. Is that what they're doing?
I think the 40B was, yeah, it was right, it was right behind O'Reilly's there.
Looks like it.
Yeah. But...
When was the last flagging done?
When was what?
The last flagging, like 2015, I believe.
Oh, no. I was out there, I walked with them when they flagged just after O'Reilly's. I don't even think O'Reilly's was even open yet. So that was after 2015, I think. 190 units, yeah. Right.
I think Conservation just stated that it hasn't been flagged since 2017.
Oh, really? Forget the, who's the guy out there flagging? He put some of the flags up there, because when I walked it with them, this was maybe two years ago, three years ago, we tripped over that big pipe that was coming from, how many liquors that took all the runoff from the parking lot? And just ran a pipe out and there. What's this? Where did this come from? It's not on any plan. And they just pumped the water up there. It's, okay. Interesting. But I just thought I'd bring that up. That was, they passed out a bunch of these, so I just grabbed one. Just to get an idea of what they were talking about.
Maybe we can make a copy for the file.
I'm sure there were even some kicking around, but I don't know.
I mean, I'm not sure if you can see that one, but we can have a look.
It's a secret, Joanne. I'm sure, I don't, did they leave extra copies with the zoning or anything?
No.
No? Okay, so I stole this one. No, they were passing them out, they were passing them out, so I just held on to it.
For sure. So we need a motion. What date do we need to extend to?
If we know 60 days, that would be until December 26. So if there's a request there, I'll have your read there. Your request will be...
I think it was December 1st or December 2nd. I think it was the 1st.
To your scheduled meeting on December 1st, so this will require, this request will allow time. How about I read this whole thing and track it? How about that?
That's perfect.
Okay. All right. Silver Engineering Associates on October 4th to ask the Planning Board, re 314 Plymouth Street. On behalf of our client, R&amp;J LLC Silver Engineering Associates, request that the scheduled public hearing for October 6, 2022, for a special permit to construct a building in excess of 15,000 square feet, be open and continued without testimony to your scheduled meeting of December 1, 2022. This request will allow time for Silver Engineering to submit a completed site plan and application by the November 7, 2022 filing deadline. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. Okay, I have a motion to extend petition number 981 to December 26, 2022.
I'll make a motion to extend petition 91. What was it?
981.
981.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Include, I think I'd like to recommend that Joanne send a letter with the written extension, the official one.
We're going to have to have them sign it. And we're going to have to sign it.
Yeah, maybe if we, you're right, right. But if they weren't going to show up until December...
Oh, right here. Right?
Yeah, they need to sign that. I can fill the rest of them out then, like I said, I just can.
Okay. Yeah, so we can sign it and have it all completed and send it to them.
Yeah.
All right. Go straight home, so I...
Good night.
Okay, thank you.
Good night. So you said that would be six...
I would just do 60 days till December 26.
Did they say?
Wait a minute, how does, how does that work? 60 days? Because it's October 6.
December.
So November, that would be December 6.
It would be 90 days to get us past the...
That would be December 6th, for 60 days.
Because they submit a site plan, so they might do the 30 days, you know, for comments and distribution.
So long. We need to stick to that.
I'd go 90.
Till the 26th, so. Okay, let's redo that motion. We're going to redo that motion for the 90 days.
Oh, I was...
Does that make sense?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Does everybody agree to amend that motion to the 90 days?
Yes, to...
Right.
Aye. To send off a letter, to sign it and complete it, and return it back to the Planning Board, so.
Right.
Yeah, I would go with the 90 days, because 60 would bring us right to the date practically.
Right. They don't have to, you know, go to 90 days, but that'll cover it, so.
Right. Because if they don't want 90 and they want only 60, then that's certainly their option, they could change it. But at least forward the paperwork to them, knowing that it has to be addressed.
Yeah, because they want to do the site plan, which usually is done first anyway.
Because they were asked about site plans and whatnot, and, you know, because they said, we don't have distances or setbacks. So they're approximating 25 feet between the buildings. You know, is that enough spade? You know, who knows? Asked about issues, they were asked about like a security gate, you know, because of course you have 400 units. It'd be awfully easy to break into at night if nobody there, and lighting and all that stuff, so it's all shielded. And they didn't have any of that. So that's when they requested that, so.
Okay. So while we're signing, so what, do we have to close that now? So... Yeah, we did. Right?
There was a motion, it was seconded, and we voted on it.
Okay, just making sure, just clarification.
Right.
Okay. 7:15, we're a little after that, but we're extending Kennedy K-9. And they are still extended out. Hmm. It says date of extension here, Joanne, until October 4. We need to extend that again. Oh. They did till 12:30, 2022. Okay. So on the, oh, all right. So on the agenda, it just needs to say that, right? 12:30? You scared me from it. And the same thing with 416R for Denzel D'Souza. That's extended out.
They're 1117, so...
I'm sorry?
They're 1117, 60 then?
Yeah, yeah.
That's really good.
So we have time for them to start.
We have, what did he send us? There was something in here with D'Souza. He sent some kind of picture, sketching, or parking for the thing. Did you see? It wasn't a site plan, it was just a piece of paper. It said, oh, yeah, here's the parking.
That was part of the application.
Oh, that was what the application, oh, I thought that was something new.
I didn't put anything in there, no.
Oh, okay.
That's just your application.
Yep.
Okay.
Kennedy did already do the extension.
And actually, what are we waiting on for him?
For who?
For, what's his name, Maloney? Are we waiting on him?
Marking whatever's...
Yeah.
Going with that garage, that build that...
We need a site plan for 16728. That's what we need.
Well, at least for that garage that he wants to put.
We don't want to like half-ass things so that we run into this again. Can we just get this done, 16728? Let's make them follow it so that it's there, and then we don't have these issues going forward. Because if he did this in December of last year, we wouldn't be sitting here doing this now. And now we have...
I feel bad for D'Souza. I definitely do feel bad for that people.
Well, it's really the fault of not being able to get a full site plan, because now they're being hindered by it.
100%.
So can we just get the full site plan in so that the town has the records that are abiding by the 16728? The whole thing, so that we can just be done with it?
Well, I noticed in the minutes, it was discussed, and Mark made a point about it or whatnot. That's why I thought they were going to be here and put it, put it to bed tonight, to be honest with you. I don't understand the rest of the whole, though. I thought he was...
But Mark's not the board in that we can follow the bylaws.
No, no, no. The board did vote on it in the minutes. It was discussed and voted. But anyway, we'll see what, we'll see what happens. What else do we have?
So what do you mean, this, hold on, discussed and voted? Like, am I missing something in my memory here? Or like, could be. Well, I guess we can move to meeting minutes, and then we'll go back. How about that? So where are you saying?
What are we, well, no sense. I mean, what's the next thing that we have?
We don't have any motions on...
Discussion of 101 Monpontet Street?
Yep.
Oxbow Associates?
We don't have any motions for what would happen at 416 Plymouth Street. We have zero motions on that. We need them to come in so that we can get these other people renting. They need to finish conservation. Can we make an agreement on that?
I would rather have the full board here to vote on it. I'd rather have Mark and Brent...
All right, that's fine. That's fine.
I would rather do that.
But I mean, I just was thinking like...
Yep.
Okay. So the next thing, we have discussion. We have 101 Monpontet Street, Oxbow Associates in Massachusetts, and Dangerous Species Association update from Amanda Monte. So this is the email. It says, Amanda Merritt to Joanne Snow on Thursday, October 6, 2022, at 2:54 PM. Hi, Joanne, I wanted to follow up on our conversation from Tuesday regarding sending in information to the Planning Board for 101 Monpontet Street. I may have misunderstood at the last meeting. I was under the impression that I was to send in the information as I received. I have not received plans, et cetera, as of yet. I did meet and speak to Dan Malloy from Site Tech Design, which is the engineer. I should have the plan sometime next week to review. He is working diligently. I reached out to Oxbow Associates yesterday to see if they could send a letter to the Planning Board explaining the process. I also called today. I have not heard back as of yet. I am sure Oxbow will get back to me later today or tomorrow, and I will send the information along as soon as I receive it. Once the plans are complete, we will then submit to National Heritage, and we will have information from them once submitted. Thank you very much.
All right. Is she good dates-wise and everything?
She does. I mean, she just said a 90-day extension, you know? I mean, she's running the business down there. I thought she had already called National Heritage at least, but I guess not. Okay. So then the next thing on the agenda is bills.
Okay, I'll make a motion to pay the bill for $90 as listed from Express Newspaper.
Ad number 13685.
That would be, yes, 13653.
Second that, Rick?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And I'll make a motion to pay the bill for ad number 13685 from Express Newspapers for a total of $90.
Can we second on that?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Those two, right?
So we have also signatures, some just business to take care of for the Form A that we did for 312 and 314 Plymouth Street for R&amp;J a few weeks ago. We just need to sign their applications, because apparently we hadn't. So I'm going to just toss these around, okay? For the A and R.
That was...
That was the one.
Oh, for the lots?
Yeah.
I can't get over that.
Why?
You know, would you like to just speak to the, you know, your petition before us for the type then? Well, open up the plan and look at it.
Ah, I forgot about that hearing.
I said, excuse me. I said, excuse me.
Maybe she was having a band-aid.
Now, we still need Mark and Brendan to signature on this too, right?
Okay. And then we have meeting minutes from September 15, 2022.
All right.
Do you have any typos? Or changes?
Here you go, Richard. We have minutes.
The highlights?
I, they're just, just highlights.
I didn't know if you were going to express changes.
I'll make a motion to extend the minutes of the September 15, 2022 planning board meeting as presented.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? There you go.
What else we got?
Did everybody go through the meeting letters about in towns, memos, blah, blah, blah?
Yeah.
Okay, and anybody have any comments on any of them?
No.
Okay.
You see, one of them was in Pembroke where they had to review as of a judge's remand? Yikes. Yikes.
Yeah, I thought we had that going on around here too. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
So did we have correspondence? We did all the correspondence, all the business. I'll, oh, I'll make, did you make a motion?
Well, I just said I didn't, so Rick needed it.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. 7:38.